Good evening. I hope you felt welcomed as you came in this evening by our city engineer, Alex Schuman, who does an amazing job for us, and our police captain, D.W. Smith, who also does an amazing job in a different capacity for us. They were our greeters tonight. It is August 3rd, 2022, and we will call the first regular city commission meeting of the city of Ormond Beach to order. It's right at 7:00, and I'd like to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you. We have recording secretary Taylor Lockard, city clerk Susan Daederer, our commissioner from Zone 1 Dwight Selby.
Good evening.
Our commissioner from Zone 2 Troy Kent.
Evening, everybody.
Our deputy mayor and Zone 3 commissioner Susan Persis.
Good evening, everyone.
Commissioner from Zone 4 Rob Littleton, our city manager Joyce Shanahan, assistant city manager Claire Whitley, city attorney Randy Hayes, and way over to the left there, way over to your right is our police chief Jesse Godfrey. And we'd like to welcome tonight, it's a new month and we see a new hire, it's our fire chief Howard Bailey. Chief Bailey, welcome. It's wonderful to have you with us, and we will have an official welcome ceremony reception at the beginning, well, prior to the next meeting. So please join us for that if you can. Meet the family, meet the chief, and just have an opportunity to enjoy each other's company, and there might even be cake.
Yes, okay.
Awesome, okay.
There'll be cake, let them eat it.
Excellent, yep. At this time, if you would please silence your cell phones, make sure they're on mute or silent, and I'll ask you to rise for the invocation given by Pastor Neil Ganzel Jr. with Coquina Presbyterian Church, and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. There were many years of my life, for about 30, before I became a pastor, where I attended a lot of these meetings. And I had this verse in my mind whenever I stood to talk. It's from Psalm 19. "May the words of my mouth and the meditations of my heart be pleasing in your sight, O Lord, my rock and my redeemer." That kept me out of a lot of trouble. Let's pray. Father, thank you for the governance of this nation. Thank you for here at the local level, at the state and the federal level. We thank you that we live in a nation where so much is solved right here. And for these folks here, the electric representatives, we're grateful for their service. And for the staff in this room, for the fire chief and the police chief and everybody that does their work, that keeps this one of the most beautiful cities in the state of Florida. We are grateful for each of them as well. Tonight, we pray for your wisdom in this meeting, thanking you for the dedication that our elected representatives have by each just being there, being here continually. Guide them tonight. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I would ask Robin King, the president and CEO of Career Source Flag of Volusia, who is going to give us a presentation. Robin, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I have to say that was the loveliest way I've ever seen any city commission meeting opened, by introducing everyone that's in the room. That was nice. So, thank you. My name is Robin King, president and CEO, Career Source Flag of Volusia. We are your local workforce development board. We have three career centers that we provide services to adults who are looking for work, and we provide services for businesses that are looking for talent. In today's world, that is a bit challenging, but that's what we do. Years ago, we used to have summer youth programs. It was something, you know, the funds that we have are federal, and there used to be a set aside standalone summer youth program. The last time we did one was in 1997. We had over 600 young adults employed in our two-county area. And we've been able to do a few little things since then. A couple of years ago, one of my board members, Commissioner or Councilwoman Barbara Gertman, asked to see if we could create a model again for our summer youth program. And so we were working with the Volusia County Schools and Flag of County Schools, and we were looking at how we could do things. And then we were about to start a new, very small program when COVID hit. And during that time, I was approached by the Boys and Girls Club. They were going to be hiring junior staffers. And they had some county money, and they had some foundation money, and they asked if we wanted to participate as well. And so the aha moment was, instead of us developing our own standalone program, that we would invest in the programs that are already existing in our community that provide mentoring services. So what you have before you here, it's called YETI, the Youth Employment Talent Initiative. So rather than us having a standalone program, we've been investing in these mentorship programs. The Boys and Girls Club has the junior staffers, Catalyst, they do mentoring year-round, The Child's Academy. If you don't know who they are, they're on George Ingram, they are the Teen Parent School, Community Healing Project, they're located in Daytona Beach, Mr. and Ms. Mentoring, they're located in Holly Hill. Actually, he's on Channel 6 tonight, and Sisters Build Network, they're over in Deland. And so all of them and others were invited to, but these are the ones who took advantage of the opportunity. We asked if they wanted to include an employment and training component to what they were already doing. And so what they've done, as unique as each one of them are, they have classroom trainings, they have, whether it's in-person, they have a wide variety of speakers, and then they're also doing job shadowing, where they're earning a wage while they're on an internship. It's really quite successful. And the, it's for, the funds that we are using for it is very limited, and it does have some restrictions. So they do have to be in school, they are, for the most part, younger than 18, they can be teen parents. To be, if they were 19 and a teen parent, they would qualify. They have to be residents, obviously, of the two-county area, and household income less than the 200% poverty level. So when we started this in 2021, we served 104 young adults. And some of the testimonials that came back from that was, the first one was, a young woman had been placed somewhere that she had selected, and they interviewed her, and she went up there. And it was aligned with what she wanted to do when she grows up, and she loved it. And so she learned that what she thinks she wants to do, she really enjoys doing. Valuable lesson. The other one, testimonial, same situation, went to the place that they selected based on what they thought they wanted to do, and decided that was not what they wanted to do, ever. And how wonderful is it to learn that when you're 16, rather than after four years of school and everything else, and then you find out that you really don't like that job? A number of these young adults have maintained their employment past the subsidy that we provided. I actually got to go to a meet and greet on Monday night that Sisters Build, a man-up did over in Deland at the Deland City Commission. And the businesses were just so appreciative, one, that they had access to young adults to work, and of their work ethic, the fact that they had gotten training, you know, those employability skills, soft skills, foundational skills, we all call them different things, but it's what every single business wants. And we don't learn those skills in a classroom. We don't learn those skills at home. We learn those skills from our first boss at our first job, and that's what they're learning. And the businesses are also learning what it means to employ teenagers, because that's, they've had a very high unemployment rate for quite some time. And so this year, we were able to ramp up the program a little bit more. We've served 169 so far. Our year goes July through June. And about 66% of the funds that we are spending goes into the pockets of the children. I'm sorry, the young adults. I'm not supposed to call them kids. On the flip side of this flyer, I just want, I just did a word cloud, taking the words that came from the proposals that were submitted by the providers. And we did an invitation to negotiate, and part of this is also our own capacity building for these grassroots organizations, so that they can learn how to submit proposals and budgets and whatnot. And they're teaching anything from entrepreneurship, higher-order thinking, you know, those basic employability skills that are so critical for their future success. You know, that's pretty much all, you know. So I'm going around and I'm just kind of sharing this information, so that if anybody does want to participate as a work site, or become a mentor, or invest in the program, that this is, someone called it at the, we also presented to the county commission yesterday, preventance, preventive maintenance is what they refer to it as. If we just invest a little bit more upfront, their success rate will be so much higher. And this is just critical for all of our young ones. So thank you again for allowing me to step in this evening and just kind of share with you.
Thank you, Robin. Yep, Career Source, you all do, you're there for us pretty much every day of the week. We appreciate all that you do, and you do so many things that people don't know about. It's great that you can take a few minutes to just share this with us.
Thank you.
Audience remarks. I have Commissioner-elect Travis Sargent.
Good evening, Mayor, city commissioners. Travis Sargent, 406 North Beach Street. I'm sure you all are aware that FDOT plans a safety improvement on Granada. There's going to be a meeting, 5:30 next Tuesday, August 9th, at the Casement's, 25 Riverside Drive. I think it would be great for residents to show up and see what the proposed is. It's from, looks like US 1 to A1A. And also, I know there's been a lot of traffic concerns out on Williamson area. I was fortunate this past week to spend about an hour waving signs and watching the traffic flow. Every single light, traffic emptied out. It was worked perfectly, those lights going north, south, east, and west. There was no big traffic jams anywhere. That was one hour from 5:00 to 6:00, probably the most traffic of the day, and it was working very well. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. The minutes have been sent to the commission for review, also posted on the city's websites. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? If not, just need a motion to approve. These are the July 19th, 2022 minutes.
I move approval of the minutes from the July 19th, 2022 meeting.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Propose like sign, and we'll show those passing unanimously. And the action proposed on the consent agenda is stated for each item. Unless a commissioner removes an item, no discussion on individual items will occur, and single motion will approve all items. Does any member of the commission wish to pull any agenda items?
Move approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And now would be the appropriate time that any commissioners wanted to comment on any of the consent agenda items. If not, we will move to public hearings, and I'll open the public hearings, ask the city clerk to read 8A, please.
Ordinance number 2022-18, an ordinance amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map to incorporate the provisions of the second amended North US Highway 1 in our local service boundary agreement between the city of Ormond Beach and the county of Volusia authorizing transmittal, providing for public hearings, providing for conflicting ordinances, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2022-18, read by title only.
Thank you. I have one card, if necessary, from the applicant. This is the second reading. Anybody have any questions of the applicant? I'll move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 8B.
Ordinance number 2022-19, an ordinance authorizing the execution and issuance of a first amended development order for the Regal Multi-Family Planned Business Development located at 215 Williamson Boulevard, authorizing the redevelopment of a former movie theater construction of a maximum of 312 multifamily residential units and building dimensions greater than 180 feet in length, establishing conditions and expirations of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2022-19, read by title only.
Thank you. And I have two cards. First up is Joseph Valerio.
Hey, you, Bob. My name is Joe Valerio. I live 1213 North Side Drive, and also running for commission Zone 1. I've talked to a lot of people, want to go walk door-to-door and face-to-face. A lot of them are very concerned about this commission being, that's what they say, listening to the developers and big businesses, not their own concern. Whether it's true or not, that's what I'm getting from a lot of people. I myself, I'm fortunate enough to sit up there. I will make sure that anybody who gives me any campaign contributions, I will recuse myself from voting. And I truly know where this is going. But in order to avoid bad optics, as I think one of you have said, Mr. Commissioner Kent, about bad optics is not good to have. And I know that the mayor, with all due respect, Mayor Partington, yourself, Kent, Troy, and you and Mr. Littleton are taking contributions from this developer, good, not good, or bad, or indifferent. It's just that what I'm about to ask you is that since what I would do if I was sitting up there myself, is recuse yourself from voting on this, because the people that I have talked to, that's the way they're going to look at it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. And next is Paul Holm. Mr. Mayor and members of the commission, I'm just available if you have any questions. Thank you. Any questions?
I would just ask, what are the extent of the amenities you're providing at this location?
The developer from campus here, if you'd like him to address it, but they're significant, as you've seen in your package, with several social areas, a courtyard, resort-style pool. They have office complex within the apartment area, the social area, where you can have a conference room, or go there to work computers. It's a little bit different, is the way that it's going to encourage, you know, social interaction and those type of things.
Thank you. Ready for a motion? I am. Move approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 8C.
Ordinance number 2022-20, an ordinance amending Paragraph C Official Zoning Map of Section 2-01 Established of Article 1 Establishment of Zoning Districts and Official Zoning Map of Chapter 2 District and General Regulations of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code by amending the official zoning map to rezone a certain parcel of real property totaling approximately 2.53 acres located at 55 North Nova Road, Volusia County Parcel Number 4221-00-01-0011, from B-8 Commercial to Planned Business Development, PVD, authorizing revision of official zoning map repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2022-20, read by title only.
Thank you. I have one card from the applicant, Steve Schlossberg. Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Little-
That's okay.
We're ready for the vote, yep.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 8D.
Ordinance number 2022-21, an ordinance authorizing the execution and issuance of a development order for a planned business development to be located at 55 North Nova Road, to be known as the Splash Car Wash, authorizing the redevelopment of the property for a full-service car wash, authorizing alternative wall signage, establishing conditions and expirations of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2022-21, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan. And on 8D, again, I have a card from Steve Schlossberg, and I think I'll let him come up and just kind of tell us what he's done. And then if anybody has any questions for either him or Steve Schraker, we'll go there.
Good evening.
Thank you.
My name is Steve Schlossberg, and I'm here to address any questions that you may have with the revisions that we made to the, to the plans that we showed you at the last meeting. If you don't mind, I'm going to just read a list of the changes that we made. I think you've all had a chance to review them, but just so that you can actually see here firsthand. We have some coloring that was unpopular. We've changed the yellow banding back to black. We've changed the gray banding at the top of the building to black. We've changed the blue center towers from blue to gray. We've changed the shutters and the blade awnings color from blue to black. We've removed SpongeBob on the building signage. We removed one building sign completely on the east elevation. You want to click to that one? Okay, here we go. So we removed one sign completely from the east elevation. We removed the word exterior from the west elevation. We shrunk the size of the building signage letters considerably. We changed the font of the building signage letters, as requested by the commission. We changed the color of the building signage from red to black. The building signage will illuminate and glow white at night, which we think will be a pretty classy look. And again, we reduced the overall building signage from 145 square feet down to 119 square feet. So we believe that we addressed all of your concerns, but I'm here for questions if you feel that there's anything else that we need to do.
Thank you. Stephen, any questions for Mr. Schlossberg?
Just a comment, but I'll make a motion first, if that's okay. Motion to approve?
Second.
And now my comment, you did everything we asked. Thank you. And you've made it more appropriate for Ormond Beach, and I think you are going to be so happy that you did these changes. I was actually going to read all 12. I'm so glad I don't have to, because you just did. But you also worked at warp speed. So, you know, whoever, you know, your team to do that, kudos, great job.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And, you know, I mentioned the last time I was here that we're family-owned and operated, and I just wanted you to see one of the potential new car wash employees that we've got coming up.
Oh, yeah.
That's my partner's daughter, and she's in training to be a car washer. Love her.
Yay.
Very good. Thank you. I appreciate you.
No, I just, I wanted just to tell you thank you for making those changes, and you did it so fast, and they look fabulous. I'm just very appreciative of all your hard work.
Well, thank you. We're excited to get this thing up and running, and can't wait to show you this cool new concept. So I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 8E.
Ordinance number 2022-22, an ordinance amending Section 1-22 Definitions of Terms and Words of Article 3 Definitions and Acronyms of Chapter 1 General Administration, amending Section 2-32I-1 Light Industrial Zoning District of Article 2 District Regulations of Chapter 2 District and General Regulations, amending Section 2-57. Criteria for Review of Specific Conditional and Special Exception of Article 4 Conditional and Special Exception Regulations of Chapter 2 District and General Regulations and Amending Section 3-26 Off-Street Parking Requirements of Article 3 Off-Street Parking. Circulation and Loading of Chapter 3 Performance Standards by Amending Definitions to Provide a Definition and Conditional Criteria for Warehouse Indoor Mini-Rental Use and by Amending the Parking Calculations for Warehouse Indoor Mini-Rental and Mini-Warehouses, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, Providing for Severability and Setting forth an Effective Date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2022-22, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan. I don't have any cards.
I move approval of ordinance number 2022-22.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 8F.
Ordinance number 2022-24, an ordinance annexing one parcel of real property into the city of Ormond Beach said property being generally located approximately 125 feet west of Old Dixie Highway and approximately 770 feet north of Plantation Oaks Boulevard, being located at Lot 13 Block 217, Ormond on the Bay, Volusia County Parcel Number 3239-03-17-0130, setting forth zoning privileges and obligations regarding the property, redefining the territorial boundaries of the city of Ormond Beach to include the property, re-designating the boundaries of Zone 1 of the city of Ormond Beach to include the property, providing for transmission, providing for severability, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2022-24, read by title only.
Thank you. And I'll ask our planning director, Stevens Schraker, to speak on this item.
Good evening, Stevens Schraker. This is our request for annexation for a small .21 acre property. If you recall, Volusia County purchased land from Plantation Oaks. This would be Plantation Oaks Boulevard, Old Dixie Highway, with the purpose of land preservation and parkland preservation. This parcel was not in the city. I believe they obtained it by tax deed. So in order to perform a land use and a zoning amendment, we need that to be within the city of Ormond Beach. The Volusia County has applied for annexation. It is consistent with our Land Development Code Comprehensive Plan, and it is surrounded entirely by the city of Ormond Beach. Staff recommends approval. And the next steps would be a second reading on August 16th, the future land use and zoning amendments.
Thank you, Stevens. My only question is, what about that other little parcel there? Is that?
So that was actually part of what was already annexed. So that was part of Plantation Oaks, their first phase. So we're just missing this parcel right here.
Perfect. Any other questions for Stevens? Just need a motion.
Mayor, I'll move approval of ordinance 2022-24.
I'll second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And we will close the public hearings. Begin second reading of ordinances, 9A.
Ordinance number 2022-23, an ordinance amending Section 2-300 Methods of Source Selection of Division 3 Purchasing of Article 9 Financial Matters of Chapter 2 Administration of the Code of Ordances of the City of Ormond Beach by amending the purchasing threshold for small purchases, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2022-23, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards on 9A. I'll move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And reports, suggestions, and requests. And we start with city manager Joyce Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We received notice that they're going to have a unveiling of the Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune bronze statue. That's going to be placed at the riverfront Esplanade in Daytona Beach, and that's across from the new Brown &amp; Brown building downtown. That's going to be on Thursday, August 18th, from 9:00 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. They will have reserved seating for the commission, so we'll send you a note to see if you're interested in attending. Thank you for welcoming Chief Howard Bailey. We're glad to have him on staff. We will be having a welcome reception on September 7th at 6:00 p.m. in the atrium, so we encourage everybody to be there. Oh, August 16th, I'm sorry, I got that wrong. Oh, August sixteenth, I'm sorry, I got that wrong. August sixteenth, thank you. Mr. Sergeant, beat me to the punch about the Florida Department of Transportation public meeting for SR forty from US one to A one A. That will be at the Casement's on Tuesday, August ninth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty. It's really important to attend. We had great turnout for the I ninety-five interchange. It seemed like to be Old Home Week, so many people were there, and we hope we can have another good turnout here. Sean Finley did make outreach to the Heritage because they've had some concerns about crosswalks and whatnot, so we make sure that they will try to be there as well. Staff would like to have an impact fee discussion and get some direction from you regarding where we're at with that. We're kind of finalizing that impact fee study, but we need to get some direction on some of those items, so I was thinking of making that a discussion item maybe either September or October. Is there any larger of the commission about what they would like to do?
How long do you estimate it would take?
Forty-five, half hour, forty minutes.
So I guess the options are here.
Thirty minutes? Thirty minutes.
Either we hold a special workshop for it, or we can have it as a discussion item at the end of the meeting before reports, suggestions, and requests. You're just looking for direction on a few items, and then you would bring it back to us.
Yeah.
So, Commission, I don't know what your schedules are like or what your preference is. I'd just assume do a discussion item, but I can go either way.
Discussion on what time? In October or sooner?
October or September?
September, I can do it in September seventh. We could do it September seventh.
Okay. September seventh. Commissioner Selby, does that work for you?
During the meeting?
During the meeting.
Yes, that's fine.
As a discussion item.
Okay. Well, thank you. So we'll bring that back to you, September seventh, at the end of the meeting.
Great.
Also, staff needs some direction. At your last meeting, you did a Pet Adoption Day recognition. This commission has been very pro-animal. You did the anti-tethering, and then you did the doggy dining. I think it puts the city in a good position to apply for a pet-friendly city designation. The Morris Pet Company offers this ability to be designated as pet-friendly. There's no cost to apply, and the goal is to promote healthy people and pets and responsible pet ownership. If you're a member and you're considered a pet-friendly city, you can be eligible to receive grants up to twenty thousand dollars. There are only about a dozen cities in Florida that are designated as such, so if it's okay with you, staff would like to make application for that?
Yeah. Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Also, not fun stuff for last, the movie's on the Halifax, August fifth will be Ratatouille, and September second, Sonic the Hedgehog. I've never seen that one, but I'm looking forward to it. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Joyce. Any questions for City Manager Shanahan?
Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley.
You're good night.
Thank you. And City Attorney Randy Hayes.
Good night, thank you.
And tonight, we start with Commissioner Kent.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Chief Bailey, welcome. Glad you're with us, and I hope your first couple days or weeks or so have been smooth for you, and I look forward to chatting with you a little bit before our next meeting and officially welcoming you to the city of Ormond Beach. But welcome. I was debating if I was going to talk about this or not, but I'm going to. So, Mr. Valerio, you and I have never sat down and had a real conversation. What's nice about living in America is the freedom of speech. What's nice about this commission is we set rules that allow you to come up and say whatever you want, as long as it's not, we have some pretty specific rules disparaging about one person, individual, all comments go to the mayor, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But I just mentioned that, you know, that may be how, what you're going to do if you win, and you've knocked on doors and talked to a lot of people. Me too, a lot. And you kind of insinuated, or maybe you said it, that, you know, people don't want, you know, this commission, they're upset, this and that. Every person up here won multiple elections. I'm at nine, and three of them have been unopposed, and I believe that they keep putting me in this chair because of my honesty and my integrity and my values. And because you've never sat down with me and talked to me, you have no clue who I am, just as I have no clue who you are. But I found your comments tonight something that I was just going to respond to because, well, it's part of our rules. We get the last say-so up here, and maybe if you're elected, maybe, then you'll get the last say-so up here when you're up here speaking and someone comes up and says something that maybe sort of questions your integrity. I'll tell everybody a quick little story. My first election ever, twenty-eight-year-old guy, I had this really nice old lady support me, campaigned for me, and donated money to my campaign. And then, after one of the reports, she called me madder than a hornet. "You accepted money from a developer!" I said, "Yes." "What is, why are you upset? Why are you yelling?" You know, I don't, we're hearing aids, I can hear you just fine. What's going on? "Well, what are you going to do if they ask you for something?" I said, "Well, I thought you knew me better than that, but now I guess I have a question for you. You wrote me a check, are you thinking you're going to ask me for something?" She got quiet because, yeah, you know, I mean, it doesn't feel good when I put it on her like that. I am proud to say, Commission, with my, finishing up my nineteenth year, I can tell you all, I have never, ever had a developer, ever, call me and ask me to vote a certain way. I've sat down with them and looked at their plans, they've shown me what they'd like to do in an area, but I've never had one tell me how to vote, because that's not Troy Kent. So maybe one day you and I will sit down and we'll get to know each other a little bit, but I just wanted you to hear a little bit more about this man and my ethical background and my integrity. Commission, have a great night.
Thank you. Commissioner Deputy Mayor Persis.
Good evening, everyone. I just have a couple of comments that I'd like to share with you. Last week, the Fire Department had an achievement ceremony, and it was just really wonderful, and I was just so happy to be there and be involved, and I know Commissioner Selby and Commissioner Littleton were there, and we really enjoyed being there and supporting our Fire Department. You know, we love our police and Fire Department so much. Also, I just wanted to let you know, last week I had the opportunity to go to Atlanta. I went to the National League of Cities Convention there, and I am on the Energy, Environmental, and Natural Resources Committee, and we talk about a lot of things about, you know, what's going on in, not only, of course, Florida, but in the whole United States. And one of the things that I thought you might be interested in hearing about were, which is really kind of what's coming up, are, you know, charging stations. And we've talked a little bit about that, and I know Mr. Hollup said he's going to put some charging station in his new development, which I found interesting. But in some of the cities, what they're doing is they are using solar panels, and of course, this is a larger city, not a smaller city, but I think it might be coming down the Pike Desk, but they're using solar panels that would charge the charging stations, and then the city would not have to pay, so would not take any taxpayers' money. And a lot of the new developments, they're requiring that five percent of the off-street parking in all new developments must be, they must have charging stations. And the cities that don't have the solar panels, the cities are paying, it hasn't been a lot of money at this point, because I did ask that question, and they dispense the energy depending on the type of charging station, and, which I found interesting, kilowatts or megawatts. So I learned a little bit more about the charging stations because I, you know, I really wanted to, and it was one of the hot topics at the conference, and I just wanted to share that with everyone, and I hope each of you have a safe and enjoyable evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Littleton?
Thank you, Mayor. Of course, last week, the Fire Department, it was an achievement ceremony, and it was sort of a retirement party for Chief King. He's going to be sorely missed. He's been wonderful for our department, and with that, I want to welcome Chief Bailey here. I've heard a lot of good things about you when you were at the county, and I'm glad you're here in Ormond Beach. And I'll wrap up by saying, last week, I was in Atlanta also, but the American City-County Exchange Conference, and one of the big things we talked about was zoning reform, and I gave certain members of the staff a case study that was done in the city of Auburn, Maine, whose mayor happened to be from Baltimore, so we spent a lot of good time talking about this. And I want to thank the City Commission for allowing me to go, and the citizens, of course, for that trip. And with that, I'll say good night.
Thank you. Commissioner Selby?
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to welcome Chief Bailey. Chief, you had come highly recommended, looking forward to getting to know you better, but you also have big shoes to fill, because between Chief Severs, who recently retired, and then Chief King, or not retired, Chief Severs relocated, and then Chief King, who retired, you know, we have a high bar for the Ormond Beach Fire Department, but we're confident that you can do a great job for us, so welcome. I wanted to also say that the First Step Shelter, homeless shelter, has, is planning its first-ever gala dinner event. It'll be, the tentative date is the first Saturday in February, February fourth, two thousand twenty-three, and we've already lined up some of the key corporate sponsors for the event, so it should be a good, should be a good night. I think you'll learn a lot about the shelter and be very impressed with the results that have happened. And then finally, I don't want to put the City Attorney, Mr. Hayes, on the spot, but you, at one point, you sort of reached for your microphone when there was a comment from the public about abstaining on votes, and I just wondered if maybe you could shed just a little bit of light, so everybody might be a little bit more intelligent about what the state law says about abstaining from votes.
Certainly, and you're correct. I was, I did so in anticipation of a question that did not come, but generally, there are laws that regulate the manner by which you have to vote and how you must abstain from voting due to a prohibited conflict of interest. In the absence of a prohibited conflict of interest, the law actually imposes an obligation on you to vote. The fact that you receive a donation from a particular individual, whether a private citizen or developer, that in and of itself is not a disqualification from voting. If a person, any person, gave you money in anticipation or expectation, rather, that you voted a particular way, that would be both a prohibited donation, you couldn't take the donation, and then obviously, you know, it may constitute a conflict of interest as well, from which you would have to abstain. Essentially, under the law, a prohibited conflict of interest, or conflict of voting interest, rather, is one in which you or, generally speaking, a family member or a business associate receives some pecuniary financial gain. That's kind of a general summary of it. So in the absence of that, the law does impose an obligation on you to vote on the matters that come before you. And in the years that I have, you know, had the privilege of working for this city and on other matters, most public officials are pretty savvy enough, if they think that there might be a conflict of issue, conflict of interest issue, they'll give me a call and we'll kind of talk through it first. So with respect to the matter that was before you this evening, there was no prohibited conflict of interest from a legal perspective that I can see. So that was what I was going to comment on at a receiving question, so thank you for asking the question.
Thank you. Yeah, in simple terms, it's not the elected's prerogative to abstain. In fact, state law says you have to vote. You have to vote either yea or nay, unless you have a prohibited conflict of interest, which is very clearly delineated. And in my six years, I know this very well, because in my six years, I've had three instances where I had a potential prohibited conflict of interest, and I not only spoke with Attorney Hayes, but I also spoke with the, with the State Office of, I forget what it's called, but it...
Commission on Ethics.
Yeah, the Commission on Ethics, right. And at one point, I think we were almost on a first-name basis. But those were, there were some matters that were coming before us where I was a party to the party or tangential party or had been involved with the folks that were there. So I just wanted to share that, and wanted, I'm glad that you, Mr. Hayes, could shed a little light on that also, so that, you know, just so that people get a little smarter about how the, how the system really works. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Selby. And just to wrap up, I was excited to hear yesterday the county council approved the Echo Grant for the Ormond Beach Performing Arts Center, six hundred thousand dollars. I can hear Lucy Jackman cheering, cheering all the way from here, and some wonderful improvements coming there. The Observer has an article that's got a rendering of just a few of the improvements, kind of scratching the surface, and it's going to be beautiful, and our residents are going to love it, the pack even more than they already do, so I'm looking forward to that. National Night Out normally would have been last night, but this year it's going to be October fourth, and that's at the Nova Recreation Center. It's a fantastic community event where our police department gets out, meets and greets our residents, and there's just all kinds of booths and participation, there's a cookout, performances, and we always love it. And I kind of love the idea of October, just because it might be a little bit cooler, and so for everybody participating, I think that was a smart move. So Chief, thank you for that, and looking forward to that. Travis, you stole Joyce's thunder and then a little bit of my thunder too on the public information meeting regarding the Granada Boulevard State Road forty improvements that FDOT is putting on. August ninth starts at five-thirty. You can attend virtually, you don't even have to leave your house, just turn on a computer if you'd like to, or call on the phone, there's a call-in option. And then, but the in-person open house option is cool because you can see the renderings, talk to the young engineers from FDOT who are usually very knowledgeable, very sharp, and they want your input and your feedback on all of it. FDOT provides these transparent processes to get as much information back as possible, so that's wonderful. Just a quick note, I did receive the Ormond Beach Historical Society's mid-year report, as I'm sure the rest of the commission did as well, regarding the McDonald House Welcome Center and the museum. A very positive report, they've been very busy, and they're a great community ambassador. We've been lucky to partner with them. They've awarded this commission for our partnership, particularly in restoring the McDonald House, and so it's been an honor to work with those folks, and I just wanted to note on the record that we received their report, and it was positive, so thank you, thank you for that. That was dated July twenty-first of this year. And finally, Advent Health is doing a program called Dispatch Health. They've been doing it for a couple months now, and the one, in talking with Ed Noseworthy, the CEO of our local hospital, the one thing he pointed out is that the three-two-one-seven-four, three-two-one-seven-six area codes are the highest users of this program. And so Joyce, I don't know how we can make sure all of our residents know about this. I think a lot of them do already if we're the highest user of it, but versus going to an emergency room and potentially waiting six or eight hours to be seen, they come right to your house. Obviously, if you need to go to an emergency room, they're going to call, call for those services and get you there, but there's a lot of things that they can do in your home that's probably covered by your insurance, and so I don't know if we do something in the water bill or something on social media, but this is a program that's available to our residents and takes maybe a little stress off of, off of our first responders by having their first responders do the initial assessments and provide the care that's needed in some cases, but I just wanted to point that out. And with that, at seven-fifty, we will be at... And with that, at 7:50, we will be adjourned. Thank you all very much.